Dude. All right, it's February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, gonna call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present, I see. Bob. Is Andy there?
Yeah.
Okay. Doug?
Yep.
I see Rebecca. Joe Hall. Is Bill Benell there?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, then I'll see Doug Michael Johansson in place of Bill Benell tonight.
Nice.
All right, so no applications for receipt. Item D, public hearing.
So actually, I, we did file a revised agenda on the website, but we didn't email it out because it, we had some, uh, the four, special permit renewals for the Becker Sand and Gravel came in. So I wanted to put them on the agenda so they would go out on the website. They're just for receipt. It's the traditional one-year renewal, so we'll be getting those for a later date, a later meeting.
Okay.
Surprise, they still say L. Becker. He's a hundred years old.
And two of them are L. Becker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably they're not Dean Becker yet.
She's the applicant, but he's still listed as the owner.
Okay.
World War II veteran.
So those will be on our next agenda, Mike?
If we can schedule the, yeah, everything, uh, yes, they'll be on the next, the, uh, second meeting in February.
Okay. All right, so that brings, brings us to item D, public hearing, PZ, dash twenty-three dash fifteen, zero Ruby Road. MBL forty-six oh-two-six dash zero-zero. Special permit application to modify previously approved special permit. PZ dash twenty-two dash sixteen. To increase building size, total number of parking spaces with additional site modifications. Applicant P Parent Owner Down East Green.
Before we start, I have a question, just so I understand. The, uh, looking at the, uh, the, uh, the, the report from Gartner Consulting mentions the CHA companies. And then another, at the application, the certificate of action, action has Peter Parent and Ralph Tullis. Could you just briefly, organize, help me organize those in my mind, so I know what these documents, cause like, I don't see, Down East mentioned in these other meetings.
So, uh, so I'm Hugh Parent, professional engineer, I work for CHA companies. Okay, we represent Down East Green. Down East Green, over the course of this, uh, process, has purchased the property from Mr. Tullis. Mr. Tullis was the previous property owner.
Okay. So. But this says that what, the what well determination is, oh, the application was the engineering company, okay, thank you, that, that makes sense now. I didn't understand that.
One thing I'm trying to figure out is just picking up all these comments. Which are quite plentiful. And I've not seen that before. Trying to figure out how to turn it off. If I can. Or I'm.
Eric, is that a good, you want me to start here?
Yeah.
So they can see it. Can you see that, Walter?
Not yet, it briefly started coming up. All I'm seeing is Wellington PZC has started screen sharing, there it is.
We got the internet connection a little slow.
Okay, so I'm not sure how many of you folks were on the commission when this originally came through, um, so this kind of starts from the beginning. Um, this is Ruby Road, uh, the TA Travel Plaza sits, um, to the south here, Landmore, being, being straight up. What we're proposing to do is, create a drive-through only restaurant with another area for a future tenant. To be determined at a later date, so this will be the, basically, phase one, it'll be a sixteen-hundred square foot drive-through restaurant. And then there'd be an area for another thousand square foot, uh, co-located tenant in the future. The parking to serve that restaurant and that co-located chain will be here. Um, and then we're proposing additional parking, uh, to supplement this parking and also to provide, uh, EV charging stations. On this, this area here. Drive-through lane, kind of loops around, goes back into the main drive. Our septic system is in the same location as it previously was and is the same size as it previously was. Drainage system collects areas from the parking lot, discharge it through a hydrogenated separator, into an underground detention system, and that underground detention system is then going to overflow into the existing created wetland on-site. Uh, that created wetland, uh, does a very good job of drain, um, and is going to infiltrate almost all of the storm volumes to a hundred year event. Um, there is another, uh, small area to the north of the parking that discharges, uh, onto Connecticut DOT's drainage system, um, that matches existing flows for that system as well. The remainder of the property that's not developed as, uh, the restaurant parking is going to be developed with a, a solar array. And that is very similar to what was previously approved. We had to do a little bit of, uh, modifications to the arrangement and number of panels in order to kind of fit the new layout here, uh, but generally speaking, uh, there are limits of that, I think. Other than that, it's, it's pretty standard, um, you know, typical site lighting, um, you know, full cutoff fixtures. One uniqueness to this site is that we need, um, well, the water supply wells is, obviously, Ruby Road does not have municipal water in it, so we need to have wells. Um, those two locations are here. Um, the previous iteration of this plan had those well locations approved by DPH. Um, but we need to go back through that process with them. Um, once the well is drilled to start with, it's a, it's a three-phase process to get a full water system well approved. Step one is getting the location approved, step two is after the well is drilled, they have to approve the water, and then step three is being well opened to service. Um, so that, that's a good overview of it. I haven't answered any questions in my time.
The wells and the, that's sorry, septic are for both. Future, they don't have to go any harder.
Uh, what was the previous size of the building?
I, I think the previous side of the building was two thousand square feet. It's, it's not much bigger, it just needs. I can probably pull the, uh, where's that?
Two thousand six hundred was the previous plan.
This work was, you mean, developed the same.
Does two thousand six hundred was previous?
Correct.
And what, and what's the new, uh, number?
Uh, if total development would be twenty-six hundred, we're looking at sixteen hundred square foot space now, and then a thousand square feet of additional co-located space, uh, for the future.
Okay. Did you have a, do you have a potential?
I, I don't believe there's a potential co-located gene yet.
Uh, no co-located, we do have a letter of intent from a, major national, uh, beverage retailer. Uh, negotiating terms on a, on a, uh, build-to-suit lease for, for them. And, um, we do have a signed, uh, lease with Tesla to locate sixteen electric vehicle bass chargers on-site, which are noted, in the upper, the northern parking area. Likely also locate a couple other universal chargers that all finance and build, alongside the, uh, the Tesla chargers.
I've got a question, if, if you're looking to utilize potentially sixteen, sixteen hundred square feet now for one drive-through only establishment, now you're only left over with a thousand square feet for proposed second establishment. Is that going to possibly detract your possibilities for a second person, like, or is it gonna all of a sudden be, we have potential people that want to come in, but now they can't fit this because it's too small?
Yeah, so the, the concepts that a, a second tenant would, would likely choose there would be a smaller format, which seemed to be increasingly popular, probably quickserves restaurants and, um, and other tenants, so. It is a small footprint, but for this primarily servicing, highway traffic, you know, I think it will be sufficient for a, for a second tenant, and the, yeah, so, yeah, it does limit it slightly, but, I think it'll be marketable enough for a, for a second co-located tenant.
So will this restaurant be drive-through only, or is it gonna be, uh, like dine-in as well?
Uh, primarily drive-through, so they'll have some, um, indoor space. But primarily drive-through.
So they, they're gonna be provisions for restrooms and so forth for people pulling off the highway to?
Yes, yeah, that sixteen hundred square foot is more than enough to cover the, um, kitchen and, you know, service area as well as restrooms and, you know, a small number of, uh, in-store dining and, uh, tenant spaces, you know. There will be, will be restaurants, that'll be it.
Any idea how you're gonna maintain the space around the solar panels? Are you looking at like a green method?
Yeah, so.
Containing space or?
That was one of the comments that we received back from Jacobson. Uh, the, the intent currently is to have that just be kind of a grass in the meadow, um, that would be mowed, you know, occasionally to keep it down so the solar panels can function. Uh, one of the comments we got back from Jacobson is they're looking for some, uh, method of, preventing erosion and with the panel obviously has gone off and the curbs on the ground. Um, so we'll, we'll discuss, uh, the details of that, it's, a lot of the times we use either a crushstone strip or a, a permanent, um, grass mat, you know, like an erosion control blanket that doesn't degrade, uh, to prevent that erosion, um, so we'll, we'll talk about that, you know, provides.
On the lower side of the panel, so.
But like the, the grass, instead of using lawn mower, I know there's some green methods where they bring in farmers and pay them, like, they get free grazing space or something, I know there, there are some smaller farms in the area, I didn't know if that was a thought in the future to maintain that without having to.
Yeah, they do grazing, they're, they're, they're pretty early. Early in, uh, implementation, but absolutely. Certainly looking to that. It's not necessarily feasible at the moment, I don't think, but there's more and more companies popping up doing that agrivaltaging, I guess, I think that's what you call it.
Yeah.
And grazing, you know, go grazing and things like that.
Grazing, planting, you know, some farmers plant right in there, just curious.
Yeah, totally, I'll look it up.
What is sheep there?
Go, go, it's a graze.
Yeah.
Let's save, save some money, that's for sure.
Yeah. Raising fertilizers. I hope that would require a useful.
You just want to go over the four comments from Jacobson, so that we can talk through them. As Mike said, we received four comments from Jacobson. Uh, comment one, it's, it's just the type of, in our, in our table, uh, it should be thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty feet. Comment two is really the, the main comment of substance, um, we are taking quite a bit of additional area and just charging into that, it's just been, uh, second struck the weapon. Um, as I indicated, that well has no history of, of flooding, it's dry at ninety-nine percent of the time. Um, so I think we've got, you know, more than sufficient infiltration capacity there, um, if required, we could do an additional test bit in that area, um, to verify. But based on what we've seen out there, based on the soil testing, we give the septic system, um, confident that it can handle that additional flow. Um, then number three, we just went through, uh, the measures to prevent the erosion at the drip edge, the solar array, uh, we'd either do a stone, crushstone trench or some sort of permanent amount matting, um, the, the vegetation. Um, and then there's four, just a, a note that will add to the, whether in the coal plant, that there'd be no stockpiling material in under feet of wetland.
Would that be, would that text be entered into the, combat still into the, on, on, on the plan?
Yeah, yeah, that, that no stockpile, that note would be added to the, uh, whatever they said in the coal plant, or for the verbatim.
Thank you.
Is there any possibility of, uh, working with the state, take down some of those trees as you get towards the, uh, end of the, exit? I noticed that they came through with their usual trimming, they took down half of them, but there's still a good amount of trees there that would.
So we've gotten approval from Connecticut DOT, um, to clear this area up on the, as a off-ramp.
Okay.
So produce a considerable distance back.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, now I was just curious about that as far as sightline and such.
You know, probably a, a much better sightline from what sounds.
Oh, yeah, right, coming around that kind of corner. Yeah, that would open it up a lot.
Yeah, I think it'll have pretty good biz from, from that west.
So they're gonna, cutting the trees is one thing, are they gonna lower that bank to a point?
Yeah, so this area, you know, in addition to clearing, um, we're regrading that shoulder, um, actually, the, the off-ramp all the way along the road, we regrade that shoulder to kind of make the, the shoulder of the road level with the road itself, get rid of that, kind of that hump that you've got now.
Five, six foot.
Is that gonna affect where, I haven't driven up there, sometimes the truckers pull off right in front of there, there's like that dirt gravel.
There's that gravel area here that's used, kind of like it's a, a staging area, um, it will be, it will maintain being level with the road, um, so it could continue to be, could continue to use that way, um, I think, you know, perhaps the tenant wouldn't really be thrilled with that.
I think once that space is occupied, the truckers wouldn't have a tendency to pull any of their trucks.
I, you should see try to pull a fire truck by there, and they're all just crowded.
All right, further questions or comments from the commission?
What kind of trees are you planting? I see quite a few trees along Ruby Road.
Yeah, um. Thank you, Mike. I don't know what we call them specifically. Which bridge? Uh, I think it might be a nasty change after this. Yeah, these are on sheet five, I'm looking at, okay. I'm gonna go back. I'm on sheet five, I'm looking.
Eight, four has a three on it.
I'm gonna get there eventually. Here we go.
Over here, yeah.
So.
Those little round spots.
Yeah, so you have several trees, um, I think that, I don't know what sheet you're calling out on. But we did a week, um, call out, you know, native species, um, maples and oaks and.
So my comment is that, you know, we have some conversations about trees becoming lollipops and getting just too big, I wonder, I, I might suggest that you choose coloner forms of oaks and maples, beech or, and such, so it can assist the profile as opposed to becoming, you know, out, you know.
Any further questions from the commission before I move to the public?
I'm sure the public.
All right, so you're gonna open up, uh, questions or comments to the public?
Good evening all, I hope you can hear me.
Hey, we can hear you, Ralph. You want to state your name and so forth as usual?
Yes, sir, Ralph Tullis, forty-seven Villishill Road. Uh, former, uh, owner of this property, and a couple of things that I'd like to comment on, and right off the bat, one advantage, um, is for this business, is traffic coming off the exit ramp. It's going to turn right, they're the first right, the most convenient for a lot of passenger cars. And my hope is that this may help, uh, mitigate the, the tractor trailer backups that, uh, occur on Ruby Road. Anyway, um, the work on the right-of-way, uh, I had discussions before I put this property on the market with the DOT, uh, about clearing those trees and doing some grading, exactly as was suggested. Now, um, the DOT's gotten burned by allowing this before the project gets underway, almost to the point of start of construction. So it's difficult, I think, for an applicant to be very precise about what they can do there, because negotiations with the DOT are gonna really occur after you all approve this. I think that's gonna work out. I'm curious about the well locations, because I couldn't see where Mr. Parent was pointing. Uh, I, I can see the map, but I can't see where he's pointing on the screen. Um, I'm curious as to where your wells are going to be with respect to the wells that TA uses.
Yeah, we're proposing the wells, um, due to the north end of the parking lot, so, um. I'm gonna share.
Which sheet, which sheet? I've got it up here, I just can't do the two screens at the same time.
So on, uh, sheet two, you know, the overall site plan.
Okay.
And then, um, where the, EV charging spaces are.
Yeah.
Always edge, there's two, two small wells, they've got, uh, northeast in coordinates called out to them. Here, yeah.
Okay, you're, you're staying as far north on the property as practical than with your well locations, that would be my take. The reason I bring this up is that TA, I think, has a well close by, uh, along the edge of their parking lot. I'm not sure if that's a monitoring well or a water well. Uh, I, I think there, most of their pumps are next to the entry. The reason I bring it up is TA has had some problems with groundwater, um, contamination there, so I, I would be very uh, thorough in, in analyzing that water before it's, and I'm sure the health district will cover that. Mr. Parent mentioned something about a previously constructed basin. Um, I don't, there really isn't any. Uh, it was nothing that was constructed on our land. Uh, what happened when the interchange was reconstructed, they cut in these two eastbound ramps, directly through the middle of this, of the total property that we had. The low area towards the north, close to, closer to, um, Ruby Road, was actually a driveway that extended quite a ways north, to the other side of where the current entrance ramp is. Uh, but there was no basin there, I, I, I don't, it's, it's just a, a minor detail about the history of the property. Other than that, um, I'd like to see a start. Get this done. I think it's going to improve the whole interchange there. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Ralph. Any, uh, any other questions or comments from the public?
I don't see anybody online, Walter.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna motion to, I'm gonna motion to close the public hearing, PZ, uh, twenty-three dash fifteen.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing is, uh, is closed. Brings us to item E, new business, which is PZ dash twenty-three, uh, dash fifteen, the special permit application to modify the previously approved special permit. PZ dash twenty-two dash sixteen. To increase the building size, total, and total number of parking spaces with additional site modifications. Applicant P Parent Owner Down East Green.
I just, uh, can you add something, Walter?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
So because this is a modification and, and because, uh, following the approval of the first application, they were trying to work with DOT and tenants, et cetera. There are still some amendments, I believe, to the first permit, which they didn't execute in revised plans because they sort of immediately jumped into preparing this revision, so you have in the packet the original certificate of action. Um, so I think, basically, pulling all of those conditions, moving them forward with anything that you think needs to be included, otherwise it's not covered, um, is probably the most, the way to sort of get things to be consistent between both applications. The revised plans would then sort of reflect that, and, and we'd close out that approval with, with plans that we have for this project, which meet all the requirements of the previous conditions, and then the stuff that includes reference to the previous and the wetland approval, which is unchanged, the other, all the other comments that are in there, the ENS bond, um, based upon the fact that we're, we're netting the same, um, I, I don't think that a revision to the ENS bond is, is necessary, it's, it's more than substantial, um, some of the other stuff that is sort of the traditional types of comments that we would carry anyways, um, I think still apply. Uh, so I, I think everything there is prudent to just keep.
All right, so we need to come up with a good motion.
So we had, the, the Jacobson comments will be added to the certificate.
Yes, so, um, I think what you could do, I'm just looking to see, would be to add that to, um, three, so the plan shall be revised to, and then you can just add. Three. So the plan shall be revised to, and then you can just add, um, E, incorporate the comments.
I mean, we'll write in the town. That will be the only change of this, is revision, the only additional things on the Jacobs and comments. All this stuff applies, the Jacobs and stuff gets added to it. And that's kind of our motion of the lunch show. Or less.
You gonna go far?
No. I haven't.
I was just about to say, Andy, sounds like you got it figured out.
Uh, no, I I I let's 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 back off from that. I haven't been batting very well in the. Public arena lately. Falling down a lot.
It's the last page of the packet, if I didn't say that a lot already, is the original term.
Well, let's 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 play the. Let's let's play the Roberts old order. I'd like to make a motion to. Approve. Easy twenty-three fifteen. Um, the special permit application to modify the previously approved special permit. To increase the building size, total number of parking spaces with additional site modification. Applicant P Parent, owner, down east green. The motion will include the. Uh, all of the comments. All the, all of the, uh, what do we, what do we say? Conditions, that the conditions that were previously approved under record number ID, PZ twenty-two sixteen. And incorporate the. Um, comments from the exhibit, where am I here? The exhibit from Jacobson, uh, Engineering, uh, Nathan L. Jacobson and Associates dated January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Consisting of the four comments, which were already ready to the minutes by the applicant. And they have agreed to incorporate those into the final plan comments as well.
That seemed to cover it, Andy.
Second.
Try.
Okay.
All right.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, motion passes. Congratulations. Good luck with the, uh, with the business and getting everything squared away.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's. Yeah.
All right, so item F, nothing under unfinished business this evening. Item G, approval of minutes, uh, from twelve nineteen to twenty-three.
I don't have a copy. You should have a copy. Maybe it's all.
I didn't see them.
I didn't see them. Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, then I guess it's easy to get that up, but. We printed it all out. I don't know why it did maybe it didn't do it separate. Sorry, I'm sorry. They are posted in file with the town clerk, so they're there. Um, we'll move that.
You wanna table now? Well, we table those till next time.
All right, that's that's fine. I heard. Okay, so they'll be on the next agenda. Okay, brings us to, uh, item H, correspondence, uh, number, uh, item one. Mansfield PZC referral.
Uh, this is a copy, uh, so they provide us with a copy of their, um, high density housing development moratoriums. They adopted one, um, earlier that in late to twenty twenty-three and they are. Basically, uh, extending the moratorium, uh, and removing some of the, um. Exceptions to it. So this is just a a notification required by statute. Let you know that they are doing doing this because, um, uh, moratoriums are treated like testament, so they have to refer them to CROG and to, uh, adjacent municipalities.
Okay.
For August of twenty twenty-four. All right.
All right, item two, Taland, uh, PZC referral.
Same thing. Um, this is, uh, some amendments to their zoning regulation related to farm breweries. Um, the Lemick Farm, which is on Goose Lane, um, has been doing some brewing and, uh, they built a little. Tasting room and things have been going well and everything seems to be great and. I don't think he took the town's advice originally that it was going to go well in the beginning, you know, so now they're trying to catch up to. What I think the public is looking for, so, um, this will allow the sale of alcoholic beverages manufactured within thirty miles. To give them a little bit of variation, so they're not having to offer just that one thing that they have on site.
Manufactured, that's industry, not distributed them. So they could go to other farms.
Yeah.
Microbreweries, whatever, and sell other people's products.
Yep.
At their farm within a thirty mile radius, which is pretty big. Thirty miles, thirty mile circle from Taland is. Right, that's cool. That's good.
Not hoping it's successful.
I think they know, they know who they're looking to partner with, so I think that number is strategic. Sure. I'm looking for, uh, I'm not.
Maybe they can sell the, who's the one up on Chating Road there? Chating, they don't, that's not one that.
Uh, Westford Hills.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That might help.
Yeah.
These small.
Well, that place is swamped. I don't think they need anything.
Oh, really? They're not, they're hours, that's terrible.
They probably have a pro- a production issue, right? They probably can't produce. They're a very small batch, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they are. They're, they've been going for a long time now.
All right, item I, public participation. These are for items not listed on the agenda. Any, anything from the public? Either in person or online? Okay, uh, staff report, item J, staff report and discussion, number one, EDC strategic plan.
Um, so I think we've talked about this a little while back. The EDC, uh, has has selected a consultant. Um, and we're getting ready to kick that off with them later in February. Um, but as part of the process. I think that they feel that the PCC's input is. You know, uh, one of the most important bodies to be involved in the project. So they're they're trying to figure out kind of the best way to to have this group involved in that. I think, um. What they'd like or what we sort of talked about would be to find some time for the PCC, um, to meet with a consultant. Um, the the plan is gonna have a cou- a couple of components, but one of the things that it will include is. The evaluation of two or three legitimate development programs that that consider. Public input, but also consider location and market, um, so that it. It's not just this sort of blue sky, we all want. A Trader Joe's, because we can put that into a plan, but putting Trader Joe's into the plan when they will never be here doesn't get us anywhere. So they're really trying to understand what the public is interested in, what the appetite of the town is, the commission, et cetera, and what the fiscal impacts of that are, but also. The market realities associated with that. And so obviously, that's where this board is important. Um, so. I I think, you know, probably trying to, um. Probably the easiest thing would be to see if if the the consultant can attend one of the meetings that we already have scheduled. Because we already know that there should be at least, most people will be available. Um, so I think the EDC will have a kickoff meeting, um. But then one of the other things that they're thinking is dependent on the trajectory of the plan and the specifics of how outreach stuff goes. Um, there may be an opportunity where the consultant has a more public kickoff where they invite town agencies to attend. Um, so I'll keep you posted as to. How that unfolds and what that looks like. Um, but I think at some point it it would be. We would be looking to have him attend one of the regular meetings here so that he can work right with you guys.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it is too. And if there's somebody from the PCC that has has a a strong interest and wants to more formally. Be involved as as like a representative or if, I don't know if if that's gonna come up, but, um. If somebody, you know, wants to participate, the EDC is looking to get as much consensus around the plan at every step as possible. So that people don't feel shocked when something in the plan hopefully comes to reality. Um, so. You know, I guess you could, you start just kind of think about that and if if someone feels like they wanna fill that role, um, and we get to that point. Um, unfold you into that, that, uh, s- process with EDC.
All right, great. Item two, uh, CROG, Regional Planning Commission Appointment.
So this came out, um, about a month or so ago. I think it was on a previous agenda. Um, so the Wellington is part of the Capital Region Council of Governments and they have a regional planning commission. So when we do referrals, um, for example, to for text amendments and zone changes and things that are required by statute to go to them. The Regional Planning Commission, um, review some of those things. So they solicit, I think it's every two years or every year, um. Basically appointees from each member municipality to be a part of the Regional Planning Commission and sort of. See what's going on and and, um, be part of that process. The ask used to be, uh, bigger because it used to involve having to drive to Hartford. Now all their meetings are virtual. Um, so you don't have to go into Hartford and and be.
That was a nuisance.
It is, yeah, and I think it was.
It's like Flatbush Avenue or some nonsense.
Yeah. And, you know, for depending on where you are, CROG has, I think, over forty towns. So you have people spending a lot of time getting to and from the young, the CROG office, when it can be a forty minute Zoom call in it. So, um, they ask for someone, if if someone from the Planning and Zoning Commission is interested in being the Wellington appointee, um. John T. Hand had taken this, um. When he was part of the the commission. So if there's someone that's interested, um. This commission would just sort of vote to designate them as that appointee and then we would, uh, report that to to CROG. But there's not, it's not an obligation.
No, Bill's not here, we. Just a phone call away.
All right, well, let's, uh, see if anyone's interested. Uh, when when do we, you need an answer by, uh, Mike on this one?
Um, this week. Uh, you know, this, I, we would have looked at this with that meeting. It was canceled because of the smell. So we're, yeah, a little bit of a short timeframe. If no one's interested, it 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 doesn't. We're, you know, we don't lose any, anything other than just not having someone participate in those meetings. Um. I think they're, if I can look at, they're they're not any more than monthly.
They just talk about this, like, we see this stuff, all the surrounding towns, a bunch of things that they're they're just a way of keeping it formal, all the towns are doing, but. Like Avon is in there, and we don't really care what Avon's doing, but kind of interesting sometimes. A lot of it's very specific. For the town. I've been to a, okay, I went to a, look, I don't know. They're very, very dull. And nobody seemed to care that I was there.
You should just talk it up.
Yeah. I mean, Marshall would actually be, it almost like you've been multitasking. Something else.
I went to one, I went to once, one once in Hartford. It was quite an ordeal just getting there and.
I think I went to two and I said, I'm not going back because everything's about all these other towns that were really far away.
So there's, for the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule, there are four meetings. March twenty-first, which is a Thursday, June eighteenth, which is a Tuesday, September nineteenth, which is a Thursday, and November twenty-first, which is Thursday. So it's it's four meetings. There's seven o'clock via Zoom. So it's not monthly.
All right. All right, item three, full year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Hey, I'm gonna recuse myself from this because I don't want there to be any. Hits from my other roles that I'm overly influenced.
I think I may have to as well, because I I'm a member of the board.
Right, I I I I think that that there's, you know, the 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 appearance, the optics will be that. Well, of course, they're gonna approve that. Anyway, I'm gonna leave the room. And the next thing is the German anyway, so I'm good. So the minutes show that Marco recused himself from the.
We got it on tape. So, um, this year was, again, because the budget cycle was a little bit short for when we had to turn them around and then we had the meeting cancellation, so. Normally, we would talk about this ahead of time. So the budget has been submitted because it had to be. And then if there's any questions or issues that you have, we can, um, make amendments to them. I just wanted to kind of go over what was submitted.
Is it in there?
It is not, no. Um, there's, it's. I know it's, it's, I think publicly for finance, but there's some of the salary information for staff, so I just didn't post it online.
No.
And I didn't have it finalized. Um, so we're gonna just show you or report it out and I can print some needed.
Wait, you didn't keep the salaries quiet.
What?
I just wanted.
Oh, no, that, we, they're posted, but but, um, they're, it's a, it's a union negotiation here, so they don't actually have them set. So for the, for us, I'm reporting just what was carried from the last year. So even if you wanted to vote to give Evelyn and Peggy a million dollar raise, um, we don't know what that looks like. But I, so, and I don't, we don't look at any of that anyways because it's contractual, so everything that we request is beyond that. So, um, I just was gonna go through some, what's what's in there. Um. So the total budget, um, based upon what was approved, last fiscal years, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. This year, we're requesting, or the budget that I put together, requests a hundred and fifty-nine, six hundred and six. There are essentially two lines, um, which. I'm including an increase and I'll just go through each of them first, just what what it's, it includes. So there's, there's the zoning, Assistant Zoning Agent Salary, the Planning and Zoning Secretary, um. The Land Use Consultant Services, which is me. Um, there's a zoning reg revision, GIS, permit system support, which is new. Um, so that budget has typically come out of the Building Department. And we have a contract, a contract with the town of Bolton. They provide building official services, but. They don't really have a presence here, and so administration of that really has come from me, um. When I started here back in twenty eighteen, um, as far as building it out and managing it, so, um. They have been. Submitting increases on sort of a yearly basis and they're now asking for us to sign longer term contracts, and so I hadn't seen any of it. So I would talk with Donna and we agreed to just move it into this budget since we're the ones that administer the program so that we can keep better track. So there's no, um, so that comes into our budget and adds that line, but, um. We're doing nothing but carrying that existing assigned contract. We have PCC advertising, which is all of our legal notices, notice of decision, uh, document preservation, which is the document scanning, um. The, uh, office expenses and then dues, fees, memberships. So if you go to a training, um, any of the other stuff, uh, training that. Uh, Evelyn or Peggy were to go to or any education or anything along those lines. So we have a three hundred and sixty-eight dollar increase, which is related to the permit system, which is, um. Again, part of the contract that was already signed by the town. And then the only other increase is is a two thousand dollar increase, which is associated with Laserfish, which is our document management system. Um, so that is what hosts all the scanned documents and. And when you go on the GIS and you see files and stuff, that is all done through Laserfish. Um, and it's why when that previous server that used to sit there crashed, we didn't lose everything because we don't host anything on site. Um, we went to the cloud-based version of Laserfish because after talking with Novus. The cost of purchasing, setting up and then maintaining a new server when that one failed would have been more. Um. And this, uh, actually, this license is a, will provide for a public portal. So all the documents will be posted on a public portal, which people will be able to access. Um, and and will actually. Um, and, and will actually be available to other departments. Um, so that's really it. Um overall, it is just over a one percent increase.
We as a commission have to say, yes, we approve this.
Yeah.
So that you can submit it. I don't, like, my other role in town.
Yeah, so typically, I, when I make the presentation, I would explain to the Board of Finance that this was endorsed by PZC. Um, if you agree to endorse it, or if there's other things that you want to change or whatever, just make those revisions.
I, I think I probably need to like not vote on this one, Mike. Cause, cause I'm.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, but the, but the rest of the commission certainly feel free.
Sounds good to me, Mike. I don't have any comments.
Yeah, but I think we should endorse it.
Yes.
You make it a proper motion though, so if anyone else.
I'll make a motion that we endorse uh the uh budget. Um, the twenty, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five budget for the land use office. Um, oh, I don't, I've got uh one fifty-nine.
Six oh six.
Six oh six. Uh, which is an increase of uh one uh percent over last year's budget. You have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. You got it?
Okay, great. And, and not that it, I took a little bit of heat during my last budget presentation part, so I, I will just tell you for for the fifth year going into the sixth year that I've been here, we, there's, there's no increase that you're associated with my services of the town.
Mike, I think things will be a little different this time, but.
Just wanna make it clear, my, the, our rate has been flat since we started. We have not increased it a dollar, and, and nothing that I have in here does that.
Okay.
Totally noted. That's all, that's all I have.
All right, it is seven twenty-three PM, meeting adjourned.